Good evening and thank you for joining us for the February 27th Board of Education meeting. If everyone could join me for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our February 27th Board of Education meeting. This meeting was originally to have taken place on February 13th, but that was canceled due to a nor'easter and postponed until after our winter recess. I hope everyone had a wonderful, relaxing winter break, and I'm thinking, maybe, just maybe, we might be out of the woods with the winter weather.
We're out. We're done. We've only got one season left.
Before long, it will be hurricane season. Tonight is also our second and final open topics forum session of the school year, and we will get to that immediately following our presentations. At our last Board of Education meeting on February 6th, we kicked off the official budget season here in the district with the presentation of my recommended budget for the 24-25 school year. Tonight, we'll take a deep dive into specific budget areas of interest to the public. This week, we'll hear presentations about curriculum, instruction, and assessment, as well as PPS and special education components of the budget. At our next Board of Education meeting, next Tuesday, March 5th, we will learn about technology, athletics, and facilities, those portions of the budget. And as always, I will send presentations and videos for those subject areas out to the community in my Friday updates for those who'd like to get their news that way. And they will also be posted in a special area, they already are posted on a special area on the district website, with all the 24-25 budget information. So if you look in the link on the pop-up in the bubble when you go onto the website, you'll see information about kindergarten registration and the budget. You just click on it, it'll take you right to it. Couple of exciting events are coming up this weekend. First, the Rye High School Parson Street players are presenting their spring show, Mamma Mia, in three performances, Friday at 7:00, Saturday at 2:00, and Saturday at 7:00 p.m. Andrea and I are planning on attending the Friday night show, so we hope to see you there. And on Saturday, the boys' basketball team is taking on Byram Hills in the Section 1 finals at the county center at 2:15. And the game last night, Brian and I were there, it was a nail-biter and very close, but it was incredibly exciting. So, go Garnets! And that concludes my report for this evening. Chris, last show for you, huh?
Yes, big one. A little bit of acupal after the rest of your day. This is for the Parson Street player, this is a big night.
Lot of Parson Street player performances for the Repetto family over the years.
I've kept that ticket stub. Share pictures.
We can make that a throwback Thursday.
Okay. Well, very cool. All right, thank you for the update, and we will move directly into our presentations and discussion, and we will begin with curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Dr. Murray?
Hi, good evening. So tonight, I'll be giving you an overview of the budget for curriculum instruction and assessment for the 24-25 school year. The budget is closely connected to the Rye commitment in terms of the work that we do with students and the type of instruction that we provide to increase their critical thinking skills, their problem-solving skills, and their ability to communicate effectively. It's also closely connected to the work that we do with our teachers in terms of professional learning that we offer. We always want to make sure that it's relevant, of high quality, and meaningful to them. So before I start talking about our focus areas for 24-25, I just want to do a quick recap of the work that's going on this year, so you can see how the upcoming work is connected to it. So at the elementary level, we have a focus on phonics and phonological awareness this year, which continues from the previous years, and our work with the Haskins Lab. We are currently piloting a new science curriculum in some classrooms across the district, and I'll talk more about what that means for next year. The literacy committee has two pilots going. One is a new handwriting program in kindergarten first and second grade, and the other is a new word study program in third, fourth, and fifth, and it's called Spelling Connections. Both of those programs are showing really positive student data, so we're in a good place there. At the middle school, we are focusing on designing interdisciplinary units of study right now. So we've taken the ELA and the socialized teacher of each team, brought them together to design a unit that is research-based and argumentative writing. The sixth-grade math teachers are continuing their professional learning with Math in Focus since we rolled that up to sixth grade. And then our science teachers at both the middle school and high school are working with getting some professional learning around the next-generation science standards. So as those roll up year after year, it's now impacting the high school for earth and space science, so both the high school teachers and the middle school teachers designed their course for next year. And middle school and high school are both working with Challenge Success and that organization, as well as our own internal Challenge Success teams, which is one way that we're prioritizing mental health in the district. And then in addition, the world language new standards are also being rolled up as we're designing more new courses, and year three and four are being designed this year. And then at the high school, we also have an ongoing curriculum review process and design new courses. So this year, we put a new show choir course online, as well as ASL 6. So the budget for next year focuses on the operating standards, specific operating standards that Dr. Byrne reviewed when he gave his proposed budget a few weeks ago. So in terms of curriculum instruction and assessment, it's connected to providing excellence in teaching and learning, ensuring continual instructional innovation and growth in academic and extracurricular programming by utilizing data analysis and implementing research-based professional development. And then Dr. Byrne also laid out the strategic programmatic improvements from 2017 to the present, and the ones that you see highlighted there with a red arrow, those are the ones that I'll be discussing tonight. So one new curriculum update that we have in place for next year is a new elementary science STEM program. The district-wide, sorry, the elementary science committee identified two programs to pilot for this year, so those pilots have been running throughout this year. And the science committee will select, we actually met this afternoon and did select, a program to implement for next year in all classrooms K through 5. And that implementation will include professional development, include the materials that go along with it, as well as the software. The program is aligned to the next-generation science standards. It offers a lot of hands-on experiences, which was really important to the committee, as well as STEM lessons, and it also has phenomenon-based instruction, which is what the new standards call for. And the committee really feels that this program will build a strong foundation for our students as they go into middle school with those new courses that are also aligned to the new standards. And then another curriculum update we have is in engineering for grades 6 through 12. So due to our really robust engineering program at the middle school, our students' skills are advancing, which is really good news. It also means that we have, are redesigning two new high school courses because of that. So we're replacing our Intro to Engineering with a semester robotics course and a semester modeling for engineering course. And what we think the outcome of that will be is that they'll be more appropriately leveled to their skills and will offer the right amount of challenge for them at this point. So our literacy committee, that has been focusing on the handwriting program and the word study program for grades 3, 4, and 5, has also decided to offer or put in place a phonics program, a pilot for next year. Now, our current phonics program was selected five years ago. At that time, there were not as many programs on the market as there are right now. And at that time also, the committee decided to really watch the data closely and see if any shifts have to be made later on. And what the committee has decided is that the data does indicate that a shift in program could support our students' phonemic awareness at an even higher level. So the literacy committee has started reviewing several programs, we're looking at eight right now, and would like to select one to pilot for next school year. And that pilot program will be in line with all of our work with Haskins Lab and our professional learning with Dr. Kearns. So we're excited because there are, as I said, very new programs out there, and so we're really looking at the research to make the best decision on which one to pilot. At the high school level, we are bringing the AP Capstone online this fall. The AP Capstone program includes two new AP courses. The first is AP Seminar, the second is AP Research. So if students take those two courses plus additional four APs, they'll complete the AP Capstone. However, students can choose just to take the AP Seminar and the AP Research course because those will be open to everyone. The AP Seminar course will begin this fall, and then we'll roll up the AP Research the year following that. So the AP Seminar Research course is just really offer students an additional opportunity, a formal opportunity for research at the high school level. We currently have science research, and this now offers our students additional science research if they'd like to do that, or really any disciplines, so especially in the humanities, where we will be able to give that to them. And then the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program is also coming to the high school. It will be launching in the 25-26 school year, so right now, we're in the authorization process for that. So the IB Diploma Program is a program for 11th and 12th grade students. It focuses on global education, service, critical thinking, communication, and metacognitive skills, so definitely in line with the Rye commitment. Students are going to be choosing courses across six disciplines, and also, students, if they don't do the full diploma program, will still have an option just to take IB courses. So as I said, we currently are in the authorization process that will go on throughout next year, will launch in that following fall, the fall of '25. Right now, our teachers are being trained and taking workshops through IB, and then they are going to start designing the courses. And then in addition to all of the curriculum updates that will be happening next year, we will also be putting our research-based professional learning in place. So we'll continue our professional learning around our science course alignment. That will be, that will just be in the high school for next year as we focus on chemistry and physics. The world language course alignment will continue in the following years as we take on years 5 and 6. Phonological and phonics will continue with Haskins Lab at the elementary level, K-8 literacy instruction. Our elementary mathematics professional learning will continue with Shelley DeBose, our consultant for that. We'll have new professional learning around elementary science as we put our new program into place, K-5, and then we will also be continuing our critical thinking work, K-12. And so there is the funding for curriculum instruction and assessment, and this proposed budget maintains all of our current programs and updates our curriculum, all without adding any new staff. I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Dr. Murray. One question I have related to the IB program. So for next year, there isn't an increase, you know, we're not adding staff or anything. When it rolls out in '25, '26, will there be a need for increased staff?
We don't anticipate that right now. We're looking at, we're thinking that some sections of courses might be reduced just based on need, because we've chosen classes that we think that students will gravitate towards and maybe not take others, so we can kind of move staff around that way, but we'll watch that closely.
Okay, yeah, great. Other questions?
I have two questions. First about AP Capstone. I just want to make sure I understand this correct. So AP Seminar is starting this year?
This coming fall, yep, '24.
And then you say, and then AP Research is the next year?
Yes.
And then it says plus four additional AP.
Yes.
Is that to get a certificate? So you can take the classes individually, but is there a certificate or something?
Yeah, you'd get like a diploma endorsement that you completed the Capstone program.
Okay.
But as I said, you don't need to complete the Capstone program if you are just interested in taking the AP Seminar and the AP Research course, that would be awesome, too.
And are there any, like, caps on the number of students that can take any of these classes? Is it, will we just fill this with demand?
Yeah, it's based on demand.
Okay, okay, perfect. And then you just talked about science, I think you talked about it at the end. I was just curious about the next-generation science standards?
Yes.
Because you talked about it in elementary school?
Yeah.
And then I think you said something about chemistry?
Yes.
In the high school? And then I thought we talked about in middle school about earth science?
Yes.
Could you just explain what's going on in the middle school and the high school for science?
Sure. So the next-generation science standards are rolling up one year at a time.
Okay.
So for this year, they came into play for eighth-grade science, and so that means that this year, our eighth-grade teachers and our high school teachers, who are going to teach earth and space science under the new standards, have been designing that course this year. So students will be ready for students for next year. So that means that next year, we have to make sure we design chemistry and physics so when those students get to those grade levels, that course will be ready. So it's just a one-year-at-a-time rollout.
Got it, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
I have one question back to the AP Capstone, and maybe I'm having trouble just sort of crystallizing this for myself.
Sure.
So say next year, there's students that want to do AP, so AP Seminar will be offered in a particular class, or the student chooses a subject area they want to do it in?
So AP Seminar is the course?
It's the course itself.
Yep. And you basically investigate and research something that you're interested in?
Okay.
Yep.
So that course will be a standalone?
Yes.
Course? But within that, a student can choose any area of study?
Of study.
That they would be interested in?
Yes.
And so there's, so for that particular, like, if you have somebody who wants to study, like, a humanities versus a science, there's no need to have an additional teacher that would be able to speak to that particular area?
Correct. They will be, they'll be able to lead them through the process and that research, yes.
Okay. And then, and then the AP Research would be a subsequent year after the AP Seminar?
Correct.
If you want to go for the Capstone piece?
Mm-hmm.
And I guess, so for that, help me understand, like, what would be the student choice if someone wanted to do a science? Since we have a science research option currently, how would, like, what would be the differentiator for someone? Would it just be the fact that they took the AP Seminar, or?
Well, it could, that could be it. It also is that our science research program really involves some competitions as well that you probably wouldn't see that with the AP Research course.
Okay.
And so, and what might happen is kids who are interested in science might want to do the science research program, which is, which is great.
Right.
And then kids who are interested in other fields will probably gravitate more towards the AP Research.
Okay. And then again, similar to the AP Seminar question, like, that course wouldn't require a particular teacher that would have a knowledge in a particular area?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And just, to be able to earn the distinction on the diploma for the AP Capstone, you take the two, the seminar, the research, four additional AP courses that can be in any content area?
Yes.
Is there a score requirement on the AP exams, or is it just simply you took the courses?
No, I think it's just that you take the courses, but I can look into that and make sure that I'm, that that's accurate.
Okay.
And also with the AP Seminar and AP Research, they're not typical AP exams, like you would see in other courses. It's that you're presenting what you learned through your own research project, so it's...
And my understanding is that the seminar is more about developing research skills, and then the second year is when you really dive into the research itself?
Implement your, yep, your research project and your presentation.
And that's in the research class, in the seminar, skill building of research?
Yep.
Great. Sorry. And then I guess similarly to, for the IB program, just going back to like the, how this would get divided up among staff, I guess. So currently, I know you mentioned that we were having training done for current staff in the IB program. Is that, like, how many people are being trained?
We're, our goal is to train two staff members per course, so we have flexibility.
Okay. And then, and then I guess at that point, say, you would have to reevaluate if there was like a significant influx of students that wanted to go down this road?
Right.
Versus either the, like, another AP option or?
Right.
A Regents class or something like that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It will also be interesting to see if the state makes any decisions based on the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations by the time we're moving to implementation.
I mean, really?
Well, because how would that, for those of us who may not be aware, how would IB impact that?
So one of the, one of the recommendations is that IB courses would be able to replace Regents exam requirements, and that seemed to be very well-received from the Regents, the actual Regents themselves that were there, and from state ads. So I don't think that's a difficult move at all.
Anyone else have questions? All right, thank you very much, Dr. Murray, I appreciate it. And we will now move on to the PPS and Special Education budget.
Good evening. I'm Erin Friedenberg, Director of PPS and Special Education, and I am happy that I'll be able to present today on the programs that we are currently having and what the budget will support with the continued programs for next year. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank, obviously, all of the Board of Education for their support, my administrative colleagues, as well as Amy Osuli and Linda Flanagan, who are supervisors for special education and our office assistants, because all of this is possible, obviously, not just from me, but with the support of everyone around. As always, our programming and what we are recommending in terms of the budget is directly aligned with the Rye commitment, in particular, supporting an equitable, inclusive school system. So I remember when I first came here, within my first couple of weeks, I was meeting with Dr. Byrne, and he asked me, I said, what are, you know, some of the goals that you'd like me to work on? And he said, "We need to become an inclusive school system. How long you think that's going to take?" And he said, "Do you think you, one in one year, two years?" And I said, "Oh, my goodness." I said, "This is a commitment." I said, "At least five to even start to move the needle." Looking back to that now, I can say, even with COVID in the interim, we have made so many gains of really providing programs for our students here within the district. So Eric, I'd like to say that we are moving that needle quicker than I had anticipated, so we will continue to do that so that we can provide inclusive programming for all of our students.
So no baby steps?
Correct. We did not take baby steps with that one. It did move quicker than I anticipated. So when Dr. Byrne presented his budget and the operating standards, there are a couple that my presentation really will highlight tonight. So supporting the physical and mental health of students, certainly the inclusive special ed programming that I will speak to, implementing research-based professional development, as well as ensuring efficient utilization of resources and personnel. So tonight, I thought it was important to really talk about how, over the last few years, even before I started in this position, but since 2017, what we have done, what you as a district and you as the board and the community has supported in terms of addressing the special education needs and our staffing needs. I will go through our special education programs and services, as well as the professional learning, and some of the mental health supports that we've really improved as well. So since 2017, I think it's important to highlight that the budget has supported all of these additional positions. So we have hired our special education supervisors, an additional office assistant, six special education teachers, one speech therapist, two occupational therapists, and one physical therapist. So when we look at the amount of staffing that you have been supportive of to get to this place where we have programs that we can support our students here, it really has been over this time and really careful planning so that we can be to this place where every year, I'm not coming back and saying, "I need more, I need more staffing." You've really been supportive. So I'm confident that all of our program and everything with the budget will continue that we currently have into next year with no additional staffing. So we look at our special education programs and services that we currently have, you know, I think back to a couple of different times when, you know, certainly I've had many opportunities to highlight the wonderful things that we've really done here, but, you know, I can think of some examples of when, you know, my first or second year here, I had one student in particular that we had to look for a different program because we couldn't program appropriately for him. And though we can't do this 100% of the time, you know, at the time, it was, it was difficult for the parent, you know, not being able to educate her child here, and I can say now that we, that the child is actually back in district, and the parent is amazed with what, what we can now offer. So there's many of these stories that I have. You know, certainly, it's hard to talk about individual students, but just the impact alone of the consistency of the program and the support that you've really provided really has made not only a difference on individual child's lives, but families as well. So the continued support of the board and the community is greatly appreciated. Some of the wonderful services and programs that we currently now have are special classes. So we have a full continuum now. So we have special classes, we have two at Milton, we do have one at Midland as well, and those students then can move up into the middle school with the Salt Squad, and then we also have the high school garnets class as well. And so this provides programming for our students that need a more intensive specialized instruction. When they are in middle school and high school, they're typically are alternatively assessed students, and it provides programming in district for them until their 22nd birthday. So this has not been, you know, this has really, we rolled this out over several years, if you remember, but now, when kids enter in kindergarten, I know that those students will be able to stay here in district all throughout if that's the support that they need. In terms of integrated co-teaching, this continues to grow and thrive as well. So at the elementary, we have a co-teaching currently in grades 2 through 5 in Osborne, in Milton, there's, so at Osborne, we have six classes of co-teaching, in Milton, we have three, and Midland, we have three classes. So that number can vary depending on the needs of students, but the benefit of co-teaching is really, it allows students to be educated with their general education peers. They don't have to be pulled out into a special class, they really can get the same content within that, the class of their peers. It's where there's two teachers in the classroom, and all students really benefit from that setting. So at the middle school, we continue to have a special ed teacher on every single team, and all of the core content classes are co-taught, so that continues to really be very supportive for students where they can have one, two, or three, or four classes co-taught, depending on what their need is. At the high school, we now have co-taught classes, various courses in grades 9 through 11. This really, again, supports students, being with their peers, getting the supports that they need, not having to go into a special class and really get that support right within the classroom. So we've worked, we've done a lot of work around really improving upon this and making this a wonderful experience, just so that everyone knows, this is obviously a program that does cost money to run and has been supportive, and the wonderful... And the wonderful thing that I can say here is even in terms of the number of special education students in the, each of the classes at various levels, we're able to maintain pretty low and give all students the optimum experience in these settings. The other program that we have started, both at the middle school and the high school, is what we're calling our therapeutic support services program. So, this, we started, we're in our second year. We started last year, and we teamed with Effective School Solutions. And so, what we found is that there were students that many times wanted to be in the high school or the middle school, but based upon their socio-emotional or mental health needs, really, we didn't have the support to support those students here, and we had to look elsewhere for different therapeutic programs. Or if students experienced a hospitalization, or maybe something that they were struggling through when they returned back, we would have to use a different intensive day treatment program or something, and now, we can do that all here within both the middle school and the high school. So, we're fortunate to have a social worker at both levels. The kids in that, that are receiving those services do get intensive support, so they have individual counseling twice a week, group counseling, as well as family counseling to support them twice a month. In addition, we have what we call our TSS room, but when students maybe are getting overwhelmed in class or need to take a break and are in that program, they're able to go to a room to get their skills and strategies and supports, and it's supported by teaching assistance. So, then, they can, whether it's use a de-escalation strategy or a coping skill, then they're able to re-join, you know, maybe the next period or re-join their class. And again, this is wonderful because now, we don't have to have students going to different placements. The other program that we have as well is, our continuum is our specialized reading program. So, we've done a lot of work around this at the elementary level. We've also been partnering with the Haskins Lab. All of our special education teachers are, are Orton-Gillingham certified and trained. And we worked to provide a specific, the SPIRE program for our specialized reading students. These are for students that are reading at least two grade levels below. We can offer this support to them, starts, obviously, in second grade. We have wonderful intervention services as well, so we are seeing a less and less of a need for this. And then, in the middle school and high school, though we don't offer the specific specialized reading, we do have ways in which to support struggling readers through, whether it's an educational support class, or, you know, some individually designed instruction based upon what a student may need. We also have our resource room that you will hear refer to a lot as educational support class. That's additional supports outside of the class that can provide reteaching and pre-teaching for students. That, again, supports students being able to access classes with, within the general education setting. We also have our consultant teacher services. This is both direct and indirect to support students. Sometimes, a student just needs to see if maybe some of the skills they're learning in a resource room is being generalized into the general ed setting, so we might utilize consultant teacher for that. Or sometimes, there's just students that need accommodations and modifications, and the special education teacher with the indirect service can work with the general ed teacher to provide those, that service to, for, to support the student. As always, our related services, speech, OT, PT, counseling, we have all of those. Again, the reason why we hired additional supports is we have shifted from using consultants, though sometimes, we still have to use them for maybe an overflow or something like that, but for the most part, now, we have on staff our own speech OTs and PT. And that has really been wonderful because it helps to support even at the younger years, building level support services. It helps in the kindergarten classrooms where OTs can go in and help support fine motor instruction within the classroom and setup centers. So, having them on staff allows us a lot of flexibility, and they're really a part of the team. Additionally, we have extended school year services, but the really nice thing is that we now partner with the RYE REC. So, our students that require extended school year services, so this is typically, many of our special class students require this. Not only now do they come in the morning to get their academics to support substantial aggression, then they, for example, last year, they walked across the street over to RYE REC, and they get a full experience as all their other peers, typical peers do that are here in RYE. It's been fabulous. We continue to support that program. The budget continues, we'll continue to support the program. It really, again, is one of these moments that it is just been fabulous to see. And what we are, the students love it, and it's really, it's been even, again, when I say life-changing for some of these parents, you know, other students are able to have a camp experience, and some of our students, that's really difficult for. And now, they have a full program from 8:30 to 3 o'clock, just like every other student here in RYE can. So, that's been really fabulous. And again, I just have to highlight all of the support that, that the budget allows us to do this because we do provide the teaching assistants and aides in order for them to be integrated into that program. So, that's been a true partnership. We also continue to have the Blue Path Service Dogs. So, this, we started bringing in, at one point, it was with the, actually, the RYE Police Department and Gabe Caputo, actually. And so, we've kind of taken this and run with it as well. So, now, we do have them in all of our schools throughout the, throughout the year. So, on a regular basis, the Blue Path Service Dogs, for those that don't know, are dogs that are trained to be put in homes for students with autism. And so, the dogs come to our schools not only to be trained, but also have opportunities, it allows our students with autism to have opportunities with the dogs, but it's also very therapeutic in nature when they come. So, there's many opportunities that students, you know, can interact with the dogs. You'll hear more about it next week as well, when you hear about athletics, but unified basketball also. We started that last year, and again, one of these things, if you've never been to a game, I highly recommend that you go. It really is special. So, we offer our students at the high school level now can play basketball. They're in a league, they compete against other teams, and it, and their general ed peers help, help them during that, and it really is just fabulous. So, again, all of these programs we currently have, this is what we've worked over the last couple of years so that we can be in this place, and all of these will continue for next year. Additionally, to support all of the programs that we have, professional learning has also been a big focus, you know, really supporting the research-based learning for our teachers. So, the database individualization, which is DBI with the Haskins Lab partnership with Dr. Devin Kearns. So, we work with him. We progress monitor our students in specialized reading on a weekly basis. We meet with them regularly. We look at the data to make decisions. Are they making improvements? How, what do we need to change in terms of the program? So, we have the opportunity to continue to work with Dr. Kearns throughout the year. Additionally, we've continued our training with the SPIRE reading. So, we brought that in last year. There was initial training. We, again, did initial training for any teachers that were not trained, and then, we provided additional support and coaching and are giving ongoing training. SPIRE is through School Specialty, that's who provides it. But now that the, our staff knows the program, it's helpful now when they have questions or we do actually have the opportunity for someone to actually come and see how they're doing it, implementing it, to make sure that we're really implementing that program with fidelity for our students. In terms of integrated co-teaching, we continue to partner with G and R Inclusive Group. They work with the elementary staff and teams and provide a variety of different in-class coaching opportunities to support the co-teaching. And this year, we've been very fortunate that our instructional coaches across the board, really now, their work that they do is always looking at how can we include the co-teachers. You know, Amy Osuli and Nick Claire, they partnered together this year, and they've actually created their own series for the high school co-teachers to come based upon what their needs are, and they've tailored the instruction based upon specifically what they wanted to work on as teachers. So, that has been really fabulous, and to know that our own instructional coaches now are able to support these classrooms is, again, is wonderful. We continue to work with Cognitive Behavioral Consultants of Westchester for dialectical behavioral therapy. We do offer this for students that do require this level of support. So, it's a type of counseling that we can have. It's adapted for schools, and this has been helpful for those students requiring, you know, tier two or tier three interventions. So, we continue to partner with them. The team meets with them every other week to go over cases. We continue to partner with ICA of Westchester to provide behavioral support, not only for students that require that level of support, but if we have staff that need additional training to support some of the behavioral needs of our students, both in the class, aides, teaching assistants, or teachers, and they help to provide that very specifically to individual student needs. And we also work with Holistic Learning Center for the life skills classes and the curriculum K-12. It was really important that we had a continuum for those students, and so, we work very closely with them. They come in and, you know, really have helped us to not only start from kindergarten, but now, are helping us to look at what does the transition program look like as students will be exiting. Again, all of these opportunities we have this year, and we will continue to build and grow with these same exact things for next year, and this is what the budget is going to support. The other thing that I've been helping to oversee is the mental health within the district. So, it's important just to point out this year currently that we do have an elementary school counselor at each of the elementary buildings. There is no sharing of Rosie over three buildings, so that's wonderful. And that has really been great as well. So, just to put in a little plug for them, March 18th, they are having a parents' training where they are going to offer some strategies to help parents. So, if you're interested in doing that, they'd love to see you. We do have our counseling lessons that we have, that we have in grades six through 12, which is increased. We have the WJCS Mental Health Clinic. I know Eric gave an update on that. That, we partnered with WJCS. We're just about at capacity there. So, that is up and running, and that is a many, so we are still, you know, referrals are coming or whatever, but because we still only have the one clinician, but again, that has been really wonderful in terms of the support that it offers the community, the quick turnaround time, and what we can offer. So, that's been supportive to all students. We also have the Socioemotional Learning Committee where Trish and I partner together, and we are working on aligning K-12, our Tier One SEL lessons. So, we've looked at various curriculums, and the committee has decided that we are so fabulous with our curriculum that we actually are going to do our own. So, we actually have done a deep dive to see where we're meeting the standards and where there are some areas that we need to continue to look at the curriculum. So, we're going to continue that work and that curriculum development. And we're also working on, we looked at an SEL screener as well, so we're going to pilot that in the spring. So, that most likely is going to be piloted in Milton and then on one team at each of the grade levels in the middle school. Additionally, the School Counseling Advisory Committee is back up and running, so that was on hiatus for a little bit. So, that is a committee that is required that we have, where we review the K-12 counseling curriculum, and they will actually be coming to you before the end of this year to go over what their findings are, their recommendations, and we'll also roll in the audit that we had in terms of the K-12 Counseling Department when we come to present to you on that. We have our RYE Youth Council Partnership as well, so they are providing tier-two supports for students at the high school. They also are providing parent trainings. They can offer a variety of different things to us as, as there are needs. They are offering some professional learning opportunities and Superintendent's Conference Day for our mental health staff tailored to their needs. So, that's also a wonderful partnership to have. Additionally, this year, the professional learning, we are working on designing it specifically for mental health staff, rather than it saying, "Hmm, wonder what we want to do," we're really being thoughtful about what is it that they need and we can provide them. So, for example, the school counselors, the high school school counselors for the last Superintendent's Conference Day were able to go to Maris College, and they actually spent their day on training and learning specific to their needs, and we'll continue to do that as well. So, for next year, we're going to continue our partnership with the WJCS Mental Health Clinic. We're going to continue with the SEL Committee. You see that there's implementation of K-12-aligned SEL lessons, so we're working on that now, and we're going to implement the SEL screener, based upon the results of the pilot, certainly. We'll continue, look, continue to evaluate our counseling program through the School Counseling Advisory Committee. There's a commitment for the K-12 School Counseling Program that we are going to have increased communication to the parents and community, what's happening there, and try to streamline that a little bit for parents. And we're also looking for the alignment of curriculum K-12 as well. Professional learning, so certainly individualized to meet the needs of all of our mental health staff, that will continue as well. Continue with the RYE Youth Partnership, and we're going to continue to look for opportunities to provide parent workshops. So, I don't know if it was in here, but maybe my last slide. Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to go back. Sorry, I missed one. So, I missed here the parent workshops. So, we partnered with CBC of Westchester, who does the training with our staff, but also, they've provided so far two sessions, Anxiety and Stress. There's going to do one on Trauma, it's probably not the best name of it. It's really about resiliency. And so, that is going to be, that's coming up in May, and you'll see correspondence about that. So, we have a great presenter coming in May, so if you have the opportunity, I highly encourage you to sign up and come to that as well. And with all that said, we come to the budget, and then, you'll wonder how we can do all of that. And, you know, this is how we're able to. So, there are a couple shifts that you'll see. Some of that just has to be based upon individual needs of students and where they're, where students will be placed. So, when there's changes, they're not really major changes or shifts, it's just maybe a student aged out or graduated, or there's just shifts of where they are. So, the budget is pretty consistent with what it's been to provide our high-quality program for special education and support the mental health of all of the students in the district. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Dr. Friedenberg. I, for one, am like super jazzed about everything that we just heard and the idea that all of this work has taken place in really a short period of time, and our curriculum and instruction changes have been transformative. And I mean no disrespect to our curriculum and instructional programming, but I would suggest, or I would be as bold to stay, to say that I think our changes to our special education program and our opportunities for our students in our community has been even more significant. And so, the idea that all of the things that have been put in place since 2017 will be able to, should, you know, in this existing budget, to continue to provide that same level of intense support for students and families in our community is tremendous, and all without adding additional staff. And maybe even more importantly, keeping our kids here. And that is a real struggle for many districts and for many families, and the idea that we're not able to do 100%, but we're working really darn hard to make sure that as many kids who live here can stay here and can continue to be part of our community because their families live here, and these kids are a part of our community. And so, to do that and to have that continuum of services is a huge benefit for everyone, and I'm just in real deep appreciation and gratitude for the work that you're able to do. Anyone comments, questions?
No, I think you nailed it. I mean, watching the progress is amazing. Thank you. It's, it's really great.
I just had one budget line question. Because I'm, I'm remembering from our budget last year, there was... year, there was this movement among budget codes. So we have the $900,000 that's within special ed tuition, public education from last year, and then now there's a reduction of $450,000 for this year. So I'm just wondering if it has anything to do with, because I remember we consolidated some codes last year, or is this simply there's not a need for that tuition in that line any longer?
Correct. Much of this is student-specific, based on placement and where the funds follow the student, depending on where they go and how it works.
And so similar with the increase in the other line, a few down, tuition, private ed.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Because you'll also see where BOSI's significantly decreased.
Right.
So there's a lot of play within those three buckets, depending on student.
Student need.
Right.
Okay.
And our population at the time.
Right. Okay.
And it's not indicative of services no longer being provided to students. It's simply change in programming or aging out of programs and new programs coming for students.
And your population changing.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Friedenberg. Appreciate it. Okay, so tonight, we will have our open topics forum for hearing of the public. So you don't have to listen to my statement for hearing of the public. Instead, you will get to hear my statement related to our open topics forum for the population of our community that I'm sure are somewhere and will be here momentarily as there is currently a lack of the public. So we will, as I like to do, we have a public, we have one member of our community here. Thank you, public. Actually, I guess two, you know, Mrs. Durman plays two, she has two hats on. But as I like to do, I do like to give some time for the community to, should they maybe be late and it is raining, so you could have those issues. So the board will separate into small groups to facilitate open discussion of the topics on the minds of our audience member. Each group, each, the group, will record, will keep a record of topics of discussion, comments, suggestions, and questions, as well as a list of requests for information. After 30 minutes, group discussion will conclude, and the board members will return to their seats to review for the whole audience and for each other what was discussed in their groups. We have 30 minutes as our usual placeholder. We will certainly go with the feeling of what's happening since we have a member of the public. Should there be more, perhaps there'll be more, perhaps if our community member has, needs us for fewer moments, we will take that under advisement as well. The Board of Education will then provide a wrap-up and review how follow-up will take place, if any is required, such as requests for information or requests that the board investigate a particular area. Okay, so at this time, we will meet with our community member.
Yeah. We have three tables set up back there for groups.
All right. We'll be back. Thank you. All right, thank you. That was a most condensed version of our open topics, as our one community member was here just to listen and did not have anything that our community member wanted to share. We will remind you, this is something that we do twice a year. This is our second one for this year, so we won't have another one this year, but we will start it again next fall, and we look forward to having community members here. But as you know, you may always email the board with any questions to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. So at this point, we will move on to our consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda? Tom Stein, seconded by Chris Repetto. Let's take a look at the consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Dr. Byrne, I do have a question related to the rescinding and the awarding of bids for the food service contract.
Sure. So when we put a bid out, there's advertising requirements that we need to meet. So we traditionally advertise in the Journal News. This year, the Journal News changed their mechanism for purchasing ads, and they started, it's now an online portal to take an ad out. So we went through the process, we uploaded the ad and put the bid out, we waited the period, we got the bids, we awarded the bid, and then Nancy in our purchasing office was looking for the bill, and there was no bill, so she called the Journal News, and it turns out that their news system didn't function completely, and the ad never ran. So we then went through the whole process again, confirmed that it ran, and have gone through, rebid the whole thing, and this is awarding of the bid. It was the same bidder, everything's the same, we just needed to be completely legal with the process and correct that. So that's why you have the rescinding and the recommendation to award.
Great. Thank you. Okay, sorry. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda pupil personnel services in special education. And consent agenda curriculum instruction and assessment. Dr. Byrne, if you could provide a little background and understanding for us about our consultant agreement?
Sure. So the Rye Forum is, it's an event that is being planned by a group of students and faculty that post October 7th, students had come together, some 12th graders, and began meeting with Dr. Meyer and Ms. Warner at the high school, and talking about ways that our students could engage in challenging conversations about challenging topics, and in this instance, about Israel and Palestine. And they've been meeting over the months since to design a mechanism for kids to, in school, during community lunch, engage in these conversations, learn in a respectful manner, bringing experts in to help support that dialogue. So Dr. Meyer has been leading the charge with two of our seniors, Gillian Bren Silver and Sage Ruttenberg, and they've done a tremendous amount of research, they've talked to their peers, and we now have a group of 18 students on the committee working with the faculty, and they have planned the event for March 14th, and it will happen on the third floor of the high school in the academy space. They've been working with the Human Rights Commission from the city of Rye, they've been working with Rabbi Grauper from Community Synagogue, they've been working with our staff and really identifying panelists who can help frame the conversation for them in a respectful manner, in an unbiased manner, so that they're really going to deeply engage in the conversation. So Dr. Afridi from Manhattan College is the first speaker, and Dr. Vinicor Meinraff is an educator that's also going to be working with us, and Myra Clark Siegel of the American Jewish Committee. So those are coming as volunteers, but we've met with them. Some of us have actually been to hear the speakers at different events. So Dr. Murray and I have met Myra Clark Siegel in an event that was hosted for administrators several weeks ago in the county, and we really think that this will be a good opportunity. It's completely voluntary for students to participate. They'll register in advance. It will be capped at 40 for this first event on the 19th, and we anticipate, based on this structure, that we'll be able to do this again with other topics moving forward. That's the intent, is to be able to really take an opportunity for kids of their own interest to engage in civil discourse around topics that frankly are, these conversations aren't happening in our country right now in a respectful manner. So we're really excited about it. Obviously, it's a lot of planning and discussion, you need a lot of guardrails around it, and respect is incredibly important, and these students have done an amazing job getting us to this place, and I'm really looking forward to the event.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I need to go back to the consent agenda fiscal. There is a wonderfully large donation from the Rye Fund for Education for supporting grants, and I was just hoping you could provide some context to how grants are determined, who applies for grants, all that good stuff.
Sure. So in the two years since the relaunch, so this is year two of the relaunch of the fund, last year, it was kind of haphazard, the process of identifying grants, it was really driven by what the district brought forward from district administration. But in the course of last year, we worked closely with the fund, I particularly, and they've built a structure for a grant process. So there's a very clear grant process that is aligned to the Rye commitment. And applicants, so the applicants are staff, so teachers and administrators, they meet with, and the grant coordinators from the fund went and met with every faculty and explained the grant process to them, explained what the requirements were and how it worked. And there's an application process with deadlines. There are two different kinds of grants that they do. They do Insta-grants, which are smaller grants for less than $2,500, that get approved on a fast-track basis, so you can apply, they have a window for the Insta-grants in the fall. You can apply on a Tuesday and within two or three weeks, you could have funding for a project, but it has to meet the criteria, it's reviewed by the building principal, it's also reviewed at the district level with Dr. Murray and myself, and then it goes before the trustees of the fund who make final determinations on those projects. So, you know, they had a lot of interest from teachers, so teachers from different subject areas, different levels, put proposals together, not everything was funded, because there were projects that did not meet the criteria, or they were incomplete in the process. And the grant committee has gone back, the grant committee from the fund, has gone back to those teachers to work with them to refine those proposals so they could be considered moving forward.
Great.
We are grateful to the fund for their support.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, great. So all those in favor of the consent agenda, or all those for approval of the consent agenda? Seven, none. So on this evening's consent agenda, sorry, very loud, very loud. Okay, we have the establishment of a board of registration, which will allow for voter registration to take place at the district office and at some of our schools. So we will have a voter registration that will take place on Thursday, April 18th, between the hours of 12:00 and 7:00 p.m. at Midland School, and also on the same day, April 18th, between the hours of 12:00 and 7:00 p.m. at the Milton School. In addition, on April 8th, between the hours of 9:00 and 11:00 a.m., voter registration will take place at the Osborne School, and between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m., voter registration on April 8th will take place at the Osborne School. These are additional new opportunities for voter registration that will accompany our typical voter registration event that will take place this year on May 1st, between the hours of 4:00 and 8:00 p.m., and that will happen at the Central Office Administration on 555 Theodore Brend, Suite B101. So this is a great opportunity for all of our family members to be able to go ahead and vote for the budget, and we will also have trustee elections for our May 21st budget and trustee election vote. And anyone who is new to the city of Rye, who has moved within the city of Rye since the last time they voted, needs to update their voter registration, and so this is a great opportunity to take part in that. In addition, I'm sorry, did you want to say something? You're good? Okay. In addition, we have the Rye Fund for Education donation in the amount of $213,997.99. The Rye Fund for Education is helping to support large-scale printing, academic clubs at the high school, a replacement of the scoreboard at Nugent Stadium, which is very exciting, the training that will happen for the IB program that Dr. Marie spoke about earlier this evening, an EEL survey for racket sports at Osborne, for AI Professional Learning Conference, team wall decorations here at the middle school, STEAM and energy and engineering workshops, K-5 responsive classroom training for our staff, and K-12 literacy institute for staff as well. And so as Dr. Byrne mentioned earlier, we are very grateful for the work and the support of the Rye Fund for Education, and it is a great opportunity for members of our community to be able to support the initiatives and the innovation and the work of the district through individual family donations. And so we are grateful for that, because there's, as you can see, a lot of stuff that's able to be done outside of the budget through our community's support, and we greatly appreciate that. We also have the awarding of the food service contract for Aramark, and we are hiring two assistant coaches for our unified basketball program, which we did speak about earlier, and if you have a chance this season, you must come see a game. It is even better than watching my Villanova basketball team play. So please, when the schedule comes out, we'll certainly let everyone know, but it is worth it, for sure. Okay, so moving on, we have no presentations and discussions, no information and discussions, so that takes us to community updates. Nobody met, because we were on vacation. So we do have policy tomorrow, very exciting, and on our leap day, we have our technology meeting. So we'll have lots to hear about at our next meeting on March 5th. So seeing nothing else from anyone else? No, we're good? Okay, we ask that you join us on March 5th for more budget presentations related to facilities, athletics, and technology. And that will also be an opportunity prior to the board meeting for members of the public who might be interested in board service to come on out and learn a little about what it means to be a member of the Board of Education. So.
And then just one addition.
Sure.
Do we want to preview the, instead of the Saturday budget cafe?
Yeah.
That we're going to be doing one in just a couple of weeks?
Sure.
Yeah, so on Tuesday, March 19th, we will hold the Community Budget Cafe from 5:30 to 6:30 here at the middle school in the I-Lab. So we're going to shift up from Saturday, so I'll have to make sure that information will be out broadly in the community, and we hope folks that will come out and have a chance to meet with administrators and see the board and get any questions they have about the budget answered. So right here, 5:30 in the middle school I-Lab, Tuesday, March 19th, preceding the board meeting.
Okay, great. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein. All those in favor? Seven, nothing. Thank you. Have a good evening.